We're going to go ahead and call this meeting for order. Everyone is present tonight. Adoption of the agenda. There are no changes. Get a motion.
I'll move to adopt the agenda as presented.
Second. Then moved and seconded to adopt the agenda. All in favor? Pass this seven zero. Opportunity for visitors. I think Mr. Baird, you had something that you wanted to present to the board?
Yes.
Okay. You want to go ahead and do that now?
Sure, I can.
Okay.
Absolutely.
That would be perfect, thank you.
Okay, yeah. I assume you guys already have this one.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, sorry, I put you on the hot seat there.
No, you're all right. So I think everybody's aware that we'd like to explore the opportunity of adding a sixth coach on the football staff. On the paper, there's written out ways that we could use it. And, you know, so am I wrong? Have you guys all seen this piece of paper?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, so I guess, you know, do you guys have any questions for me? Any concerns? Okay, so if you flip it on that backside, it's kind of a breakdown into what we do with our web-based program through Huddle. The game's kind of evolved and with technology, it allows us as high school coaches to do a much better job. Just, it makes us work more efficiently, so to speak. So what we have here is our breakdown, what we do on the weekends, and this is just our Saturday work with our coaches. And everybody's got columns. And I would say on average, our assistants probably spend, on a normal week, four to five hours just putting in data. This has to be done by Sunday so we can run reports and start working on our next opponent as far as the game plan goes. So you can see, I got the top part is how we do it now. Obviously, we're still kind of in limbo waiting to find out, finalize our staff. But I went ahead, I could just kind of give you an example of what it would be like if we had an extra coach, and how we would divvy up the columns. Below that, you know, I don't know if the option of using a donor, if it's the option of the district paying for it, or if it has to come out of our account. But, and these aren't 1,000% exact numbers. These are just close to what we have bought through the football fund over the years. You know, we bought a pair of white game pants, and that's a rough estimate on how much it costs. We've bought stuff that's not just football. We bought stuff for the weight room, you know, that obviously every athlete in the district, and sometimes not even an athlete, just a student that goes to the high school there or the middle school that's in the weight room. So that's the stuff we've bought out of our account over the last 10 or 11 years. You know, so as much as we can, we try to help the athletic department out and not make it such a burden on that department because it is expensive, and we try to do our best to offset that as much as possible. So, you know, I think the opportunity exists for us to look into this and add an extra coach. There are some options available right now in the area to get an additional coach and a quality coach. And it would have to be a quality person because, you know, we're going to ask them to lead their own position meetings. I mean, they're really their own little head coach. They have their position group and they're in charge of it. And, you know, I can't, I can't go help them all the time. They've got to be able to do it on their own. So, you know, like I said, we have a need for a tight ends coach. Defensively, I have a group right now. Like I've coached safeties for the last couple of years. It would be nice to have a safeties coach where I could float, watch how my assistants are coaching drills, maybe help a young coach that might need some help. And I have that ability offensively, I just don't on the defensive side. So, you know, I really appreciate it. And it's just the amount of work that goes into it. I think during the school year on a regular Tuesday or Wednesday, it's probably three to five hours just to plan a practice. It's grueling. It's a grind of the season. And by adding this coach, it would lessen the load on the other five. So, and at the end of the day, it helps the kids. And I think that's, you know, every decision we make should be with that in mind. But if you guys don't have any questions for me, I appreciate your time and thank you guys for considering that.
Thank you for coming and presenting this. And we wanted to have a discussion this evening about it, so.
Okay. And then not that I'm trying to press, but, you know, things are moving quickly. You know, summer's right around the corner. We have our team camp June 2nd through the 6th, and then we go to Hays the 17th, 16th and 17th. And it's a lot of planning. That's the thing about football is there's so much preparation. We only play guaranteed nine Fridays, but there's so much preparation that goes into it. So, you know, obviously, the sooner the better so I can get whoever that sixth guy may be up to running and so we can be efficient when we get our kids June 2nd. So, thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any other visitors? I don't see any. Okay, move on to the consent agenda. We have minutes from 3:11. The morning meeting and the evening meeting. We have minutes from the 4:07 special meeting with KASB. Minutes of our 4:07 regular meeting. 4:14, 15, 17 and 20 seconds special meetings. The cash balance report, check summary, activities, account activity and donations. Do we have any donations?
We do. Mr. Moners did donate the $25.47 for the LifeSmart trip. That covered my travel and hotel as well as the student meals and activities while we were gone. And then Mr. Myers also donated $1,500 to middle school cheer.
Is that for like uniforms or?
$1,500.
It'll be likely used for warmups and backpacks that will stay with them.
It was a prize at the Bingo that the HMS Case did was a $1,500. It was one of the Raffle prizes. So it was a $1,500 donation to the program of your choice, so.
Okay. Did you say those would stay with the school?
They will stay in the program.
I think you've heard the consent agenda.
Second. It's not just for children. Then moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. All in favor? Pass this seven zero.
I think you guys earned your paycheck this last one.
Yeah, no kidding.
Yeah.
Okay, item six, old business. For once, I don't think we have anything for old business. So we'll move on to item seven, new business. A handbook revisions, first read.
So just getting these in front of you for your observation. These are the suggested, these are the suggested revisions to the student activities handbook. Student handbooks, not just activities handbook. So take a look at these. If you have questions, feel free to get ahold of me or the specific principal or assistant principal in those areas and we'll sure answer those questions. Any questions at this time? Sorry.
Anybody have anything? Move on to item B, consideration of increase in preschool fees.
So we are wanting to go ahead and bring this to you this month because Ms. Walker will be working on getting the enrollment information out to them. Actually, it's already gone out, but we'll be revising and getting letters out to parents. This will affect students primarily that are not at risk. We get point five funding for our preschool students that are classified by the state as at risk. And then we're also preparing because the state has told us that we have become self-sufficient within our preschool program and we're anticipating not receiving some grant money from the state. This increase goes from $75 total to $100 total, and that's a one-time fee. We did go ahead and research within the league. The league is incredibly inconsistent. Some charge nothing. Some charge up to a couple hundred dollars a month to be a part of preschool. So we did not feel like that this was a major increase, but would help offset some of the costs for snacks and kind of alleviate some of the issues that we may have there. So I would recommend that we approve that so we can communicate out that, those things out to the community as needed.
I move to approve the changes to the preschool fees as presented. Then moved and seconded, all in favor? Pass this seven zero. Okay, item C, consideration of increasing the RV park fees.
So after 20 years, we're about to the point where we're out of envelopes for the RV park? So that's part of it. And then nine times out of 10, when Tyler brings in money and we go through the envelopes, a lot of people just don't have fives and tens. They just stick a $20 bill in there and they say that it's well worth it. Here's the $20. So our recommendation is to increase the fees of the RV park to $20. And then we will also print out the new envelopes. And we would request, and I've talked to Becky about this, to go ahead and make this effective July 1, and then we'll post signs. That way, that way it doesn't catch anybody off guard right away.
It's still cheaper than most RV parks.
That's someone who pays a lot of rodeo fees. Very good.
Yep.
I move to approve the change to the RV park fees as presented.
Second. And then we'll just add in effective July 1.
Effective July 1st, 2025.
Julie, you seconded that. It's been moved and seconded, all in favor? Pass this seven zero. Okay, item D, consideration of House Bill 2134, streaming of board meetings.
Okay, so I have not received a lot of guidance from KSDE or KASB on this. So I just want you to be aware of this, that it is a House Bill. It has been signed into law and it does affect those schools that continue to livestream. So here's a relatively good synopsis, and I can copy this and send it to you. House Bill 2134, amending the Open Records Act, limiting certain charges for furnishing records and employee time required to make records available and exempting certain records from disclosure and amending the Kansas Open Meetings Act by providing for membership calculation of subordinate groups and required public bodies of agencies that livestream meetings to ensure that the public is able to observe. So the first part of it has to do with our request for open records. It basically takes the open records requests to the least expensive person in the office, puts some limitations on how much we can actually charge for some of those requests. But then the second half of it, which is the one that has really kind of concerned everybody, is those districts that do continue to livestream their broadcasts. And so, you know, some of the concern has been that even though they're livestreaming, it doesn't seem like they livestream everything. And so, so there has been some concerns with that. As I get more guidance from KASB, I will pass that along to you. But everybody's been pretty quiet about that just recently, since this passed and was signed into law just recently. So just want you to be aware that this is out there, especially considering the history of livestreaming, you know, here at Hoyson.
Okay, item E. How much time? How much time? 20?
That's fine. It's kind of a year.
Okay.
You can always come out, come back, go back in.
We do that all the time. Trust me, I know. This is like, I'm going to smack her. I move we go into executive session for 20 minutes pursuant to consult with the district attorneys.
The district attorney, sorry.
District attorney, under the KOMA exception for the purpose of consultation with an attorney, with Mr. Don Rice and Mr. Patrick Crowdis. Present, the open meeting will resume in the board meeting at, I should say 7:40. Second. It's been moved and seconded, all in favor? Pass this seven zero. Out of executive session with no movement. We'll move on to item eight. Reports, superintendent report, Mr. Crowdis.
Okay. Get the whole vacuum here. Hello? Technology, you gotta love it.
And let it just sit on the ground.
It won't ask for help. Well, it does this every now and then.
He falls asleep on the ground, he's a muncher.
Well. Wait, it's active.
I can't leave that noise to save him up tonight.
Sorry. I have it on here. And I don't have anywhere else. Do you have, do you hold that? Can I borrow your computer? Because for some reason, this one has gone to sleep, the mountain won't wake up.
Where did you, where did I?
The tech guy sitting in the crowd.
Gary, can you help him?
Oh, wait, hang on. Now it's shutting down. I emailed it to you. Female junior.
Oh, yeah, I haven't emailed.
Are you going to make me put a request in? It does it every now and then.
I was in it earlier and you started typing and it freaked me out.
Okay, okay, so, so we don't have a lot of other administrator reports, so I just wanted to kind of give you a heads up as to some of the upcoming events that are going on. So obviously, Sunday, the 11th is graduation. That is at 2:00 PM. If you could please try to be at the northeast corner of the gym, down on the gym floor, by about 1:30. And then Mr. Mason will get you lined up. Also, if you have any requests to give diplomas to certain people, maybe Sarah might want to give a diploma this year to some certain people. Please let Mr. Mason know.
You guys want to give your kids their diplomas.
So, so, you know, just let Mr. Mason know of that. Eighth grade promotion is Friday, the 16th at 7:00 PM at the Activities Center. Some of the other information for the building is Roosevelt Relays is May 19th at the high school. Is it the 16th? Sorry, the 16th. Good thing you guys are here at the high school. 12 to 2:30. Okay, I got that right. Okay, Tuesday, May 6th from 5:30 to 7:00 is Lincoln's summer kickoff that's coming up this week. Their field day is May 20th, right? Okay, at Lincoln. And then May 21st is going to be their honor roll. For the middle school, eighth grade, we already have eighth grade recognition. And then their awards assembly is going to be May 21st at 1:00 PM. So, and then, you know, there's all kinds of activities that are going on at the high school between now and the end of school.
Chris, someone has your book fair.
As the summer starts, we have a event tomorrow.
So it's tomorrow night at the book fair?
When we book fair, art fair, local community members.
Tell me what's been scheduled.
It will be open Monday though too. It will be open after school, so parents can't make it, thanks.
Okay.
Okay, so just to kind of keep everybody updated on the superintendent transition. Mr. Horn will be here on Thursday and he and I will have talked and we'll take some time to go around to the different buildings within the district and sit down and have some conversations. I've also got a notebook started with some information, beginning of the year information, and then information on projects that we've talked about or Tyler and I have talked about, or some planning has been done. And so there'll be some information there as well. June 17th is a budget workshop in Savlet. I will be going and attending with Dodge City. I will be taking Taylor as well, and then she will attend with Mr. Horn. So we'll all be there kind of together. So that'll be coming up June 17. Some of our summer projects that we have going on, stairs at the Activities Center. We've got, the flooring company has the product on order. We did go ahead and purchase all of the product for all four sets of stairs, but they will be working on just two sets of stairs this summer and then two sets of stairs the summer following. And because the Activities Center basically shuts down after wrestling season and basketball season is over, they will go ahead and get it on their schedule to do it pretty much right after spring break. So that way, that way that can be done. And then that whole project will be done next spring already. We'll be having on different days, possibly getting some of our summer help to help clean out a little bit more underneath the bleachers, primarily on the east side. We have some backpacks that I've had for a couple of years that I'll be working on getting some of the safety products into those backpacks and then out into classrooms. You know, obviously, the cleaning of the district. Still working on maybe redoing the paint at the high school bleachers. And then the Simon Brothers started on the paint here at the district office today. So they're working on that. Roosevelt roof, although the flats are finished, at least with the material down, there's going to be some touch-up and some cleanup, but then they also have P1 coming in to help basically pick up the heating and cooling units up there and then they'll flash underneath them to make sure that there's no leaks on those as well as one of the leaks that we did have in the special ed room has been fixed because it was cracked. So there was a crack in one of the drains coming off the roof. So that's been already eliminated. And then I want to tell you thank you for allowing me to go with the group to LifeSmarts. This is put on by the National Consumers League. We took part with the Kansas Consumers League and Charlene Nichols out of Hays is the state coordinator. And she was actually selected as the national state coordinator of the year. So she's been doing a phenomenal job. And just a little bit about LifeSmarts, it's competitions and basically a Quiz Bowl-type competition on consumer rights and responsibilities, personal finance, health and safety, technology, workforce preparation and the environment. And so they, our kids competed in three rounds of competition, but they also competed in multiple activities even before they left. So they actually had done like TikTok videos, they did an introductory video, and they did some online competitions even before they went. And then while they were there, they were a part of, we had a sister team that we exchanged gifts with, but we also did a competition with them that added to our points and to their points. And then, then on Friday morning, our kids participated in, I think, the quick skills. The, I don't know what that is because they didn't allow the coaches to go in and observe that. But then we did get to see the other two competitions that they were able to participate. A lot like Quiz Bowl, Scholars Bowl, but there were also like lightning round questions where they had so much time and they could discuss amongst the group and then the team captain had to answer. So, so they, I mean, it was really interesting. We met, we met teams from Oklahoma, Georgia, Hawaii. You know, they competed against teams from North Dakota, Tennessee, Arkansas. So it was a great, it was a great experience. And then we went to the ice cream museum, had to have all the ice cream that you could eat for about an hour. That's a lot of ice cream. And then we walked it off by going to Navy Pier after that. And then that, later that afternoon, the kids wanted to do some shopping, so we made it back to the Magnificent Mile to a mall and some shops. And then, you know, the day before, we were able to go to one of the original deep-dish Chicago pizzas places and have, you know, real Chicago pizza. And then the night that we went to Navy Pier and the mall, they had a masquerade party and all of our kids had a great time during that. So we didn't make the top 16, but they did make 24 out of 47 teams, which was great. And so I just really appreciate your opportunity to allow me to travel with them on that. Any questions? Thank you.
Legislative report.
I do not have anything at this time.
Okay, any board member reports?
I have three compliments to pass along of things that I have been a part of in the district. One, the Roosevelt roof is passing on comments from Mrs. Walker, compliments to the contractors on how courteous they've been from school entrance and school exit and just being really cognizant of the students. And so just passing along that compliment to that company that they've been really considerate of school being in session. The second was, I attended the high school and middle school band and vocal concert. Just wanted to pass along compliments to Mr. Lewis and also to Ms. Bowers to see like just how well the band kids had done in such a short amount of time under the new instructions. So just to pass that along, that that was really cool to see how well they all played together, especially the high school band members, were small but mighty and did a really nice job. And then the last one was to the Lincoln staff for the flower sale. I volunteered at the flower sale, which is my first time volunteering, not my first time buying, but my first time volunteering. And just how run and how well organized it all went and big compliments to all the staff and the students who volunteered for that event.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else? Move on to item nine, consideration of district personnel. How much time? 30. I move we go into executive session for 30 minutes pursuant to discussing non-elected personnel under the KOMA exception for the purpose of discussing nominations and resignations with Mr. Crowdis present. The open meeting will resume in the board meeting room at, go 8:25. Been moved and seconded, all in favor? Passes 7-0.
Should take you for the sixth grade trampoline at the cross was so much fun.
Coming out of executive session with the following motions. I move to accept the resignation of Samantha Craft and Kristy Brungart.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, all in favor? Passes 7-0. I move to accept the nomination of Misty England for the position of Roosevelt title, age 2025-26.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, all in favor? 7-0. I move to accept the nomination of Mason Hackston for the position of high school assistant football coach as presented.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, all in favor? I'm gonna watch this name up.
I don't know.
I move to accept the nomination of Lauren Yarris. Is that how you say it? For the position of high school assistant volleyball coach.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Passes 7-0, we'll just put everybody. I move to accept the nomination of Mara Fletchall for the position of second grade teacher at Lincoln as presented.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Neil's like a drink.
I move to accept the nomination of Jeremy Dembowski for the position of high school art as presented. Been moved and seconded, all in favor? Passes 7-0. I move to accept the nomination of Catherine Schmutz for the position of middle school principal as presented.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, all in favor? Passes 7-0.
Yes. We need to go into executive session.
Are you going to, do, is, are you making a motion on supplemental or no?
No.
Okay.
Okay, how long? 15?
15 minutes.
Sure.
I will be done in 15 minutes.
In this mouth of God's ears, we're gonna go into executive session for 15 minutes pursuant to discuss the exception for employer employee negotiations under KOMA to discuss negotiations training and negotiations letter information with Mr. Crowdis present. The open meeting will resume in, or at?
9:35?
Yep, 9:35.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, all in favor? Out of executive session with no motions. Item 11 adjourned, I move to adjourn.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, all in favor? Passes 7-0, thank you guys. Thank you.